To the June 13th, Board meeting for the school district of Milton, which I will call to order, and start in usual fashion with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda. Rich, are you aware of any changes?
There are no changes overall to the agenda, but there's one addition to the stat from all these areas that we'll address that into that agenda item.
Yep, thank you. So make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave to approve the agenda that we have. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye. And opposed? Agenda is as you see it: action on the minutes. Which we actually have two, since we have met last: a regular meeting on 5/23 and the special meeting we had on 5/27.
I'm moved to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on May 23, 2022, and the special meeting held on May 27, 2022, as presented.
I will second that. So on a motion from Jennifer, seconded by Dave, to approve the minutes. Is there discussion on any of those? I hear none. All in favor of approval, signify with aye. And opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. E is vouchers.
I'm moved to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $199,290.96 and building 249 vouchers totaling $227,46.23, as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to approve the vouchers that he just enumerated. Are there any questions relative to the vouchers? I see none. All in favor of approval of that motion, signify with aye. And opposed? Thank you. The vouchers are approved. Student council, and I do not see any of our reps. So we could have left it off, but we will look forward to visiting with them the next chance we get. Public comment is G. I have some folks signed up, so I will not reiterate all of the pertinent details. I think most of you are familiar. Typically, we allow 15 minutes. I have four folks signed up to talk. So if we are somewhat cognizant of our three-minute deal, I think everybody should be able to speak, and we look forward to hearing from them. We will go in the order that they signed up, and I would welcome Heather Balsamo.
Wow, that's really good.
Well, you wrote it well, so I guess I-
No, not that many people pronounce it right.
Took a decent stab at it. So Heather, welcome up to the podium, and we look forward to hearing from you.
My name is Heather Balsamo. My family resides in the Milton School District. I have a daughter who graduated from Milton five years ago, and I have a son who has currently just finished his ninth grade year here. I'm also a teacher and a union leader in the Fort Atkinson School District. I know firsthand the difficulty that teachers have faced as we have moved through the last few years of the COVID pandemic. These have been challenging times for everyone and seem to only become more challenging in our schools as we have helped students and each other recover from the trauma that many have experienced for various reasons throughout the last two years of uncertainty. Now, to add to these challenges, our country is facing record inflation that is expected to exceed 7%, which far exceeds the 4.7% CPI that was set for the purposes of wage negotiations for school districts. The step that has been proposed by the board for the teachers in this school district will cover maybe the medical coverage increases that there is likely experiencing. And the 2% increase will fall locally short or allowing teachers to maintain their spending power as we see this record rise in their cost of living. I'd like to say that I feel fortunate to live in this community and have my children attend the Milton School District. However, I also know as an educator that teachers are in short supply, as you all unsure are aware. And districts are desperate to fill positions with good teachers. I'm also aware that many surrounding districts are offering the 4.7% CPI to their teachers. I'm blessed to work in a district that began our negotiations by offering us 4.7 at the gate willingly without any negotiating necessary. I believe my district realized the importance of retaining their current staff and that if they didn't offer the full CPI, that they would risk losing teachers to districts that are offering the full CPI. My fear for Milton, the school district, is that we will lose teachers to other districts who are showing that they value their staff by staying competitive with the other area school districts. I worry about how our students' educational experiences will be impacted if there's a large turnover due to staff leaving to find better opportunities elsewhere in order to create and maintain the stability of their own families. I ask the board to please remember that you have the power to make these decisions. You need to keep the interests of the students, community, and the educators you employ in mind. If you value the reputation of Milton School District and want to continue to see your teachers provide high-quality education to our students, I ask that you treat your teachers fairly. After everything they've been through and the tough job they continue to face ahead, I ask that you go back to the table with the Milton Education Association and come to a fair contract that honors your teachers for their hard work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Second who have signed up and will go in that order is Jake Salk.
Good evening. My name is Jake Salk, and I'm a fifth grader at Northside Intermediate School. I am here to stand up for the teachers in Milton. Some of the best people I know are teachers. My mom is a reading teacher, my grandma is a kindergarten teacher, and my grandpa was a principal. Also, have you heard of Ms. Newey, Ms. Persett, Ms. Perito, Ms. Hirsch, and Ms. Murphy? Or maybe Mr. I, Ms. Tierney, Ms. Scott, and Ms. Gibson? These are all fantastic teachers that make our district the best in the state. Literally, we were voted the best in the state. These teachers have taught me that when a disagreement happens, both sides should talk it out and find a compromise. If the kids in Milton are expected to compromise, why aren't the adults practice what you teach, right? Be a good example. Of all my favorite teachers to stay in Milton, but in Fort Atkinson, Whitewater, and most of the state will pay them more for the same work, they will want to leave for a better salary. If our teachers are the best in the state, please pay them that way. My future is counting on you to do the right thing. Listen, compromise, and pay our teachers for being the best in the state. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Salk. Third who has signed up is Megan Blankenheim.
Good evening. My name is Megan Blankenheim. My husband and I have two children who attend Milton Schools. We moved to the Milton School District five years ago in part because of the reputation of the district. The quality of your school system is reflected by the growth of the community. However, we have become concerned at due to the administration's recent decision to refuse to mediate with the Milton Education Association and to do everything they can to reach a competitive and usual agreement and compensation. Specifically, we are concerned about the following: the consistency and stability of professional educators, key teachers who know and love the district and the community. Many of these educators are not only loyal to this district, but they are loyal contributors to your community programs, such as Little League of Performing Arts. The students will be negatively impacted. Teachers will leave your district. And having to replace them will cause students to feel more aged when there's a high number of new staff. Experienced staff will become overworked by supporting new staff in your system, in the hallway, mentoring new staff, and modeling how to manage student behaviors. If teachers have to get second jobs, that in turn is less time that they can spend to take care of themselves, to be fresh for their students, to be innovative, to plan, to grade. Just like any employee, if educators don't feel respected or valued, they don't give as much. You will dull their spirit and the life that they give to our students. No matter how hard educators try not to let it happen, it is human nature. As a fellow professional educator in the Department of Education, I must tell you the decision to not find a mutual agreement on the one thing that we have the right to bargain over is that that is basically a teacher's. The timing could not be worse. We have asked our educators to pivot to virtual learning for little preparation during COVID and then come back and purchase and teach hybrid, in many cases ensuring that no student falls behind even when having quarantine or juggle multiple schedules at home. We should be doing everything we can to show educators how much they mean to our local economy, our stable homes, and our students' futures. Instead, you're chasing them away with your lack of willingness to meet. Teachers may be replaceable, but the relationship that they have with students takes time. My children already know some of the teachers that they will have next year, and having a large number of new staff will only create more anxiety for them than returning the quality. Why are you not mediating and using the help that is there to find a common solution? Wouldn't you ask teachers to meet with students to improve their grade or skills and find a compromise? We can, and we must do better. We can model what we ask others to do. I ask that you go to mediation with the NEA and the students and the stability of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our board speaker to have signed up is Caitlin Longdean.
Sorry, Jacob happened, so I apologize. Good evening. My name is Caitlin Longdean. I am here tonight to speak, speaking on behalf of the Milton Education Association. We have noticed that during the ADR committee refer, there is a proposed motion to impose a 2% base wage increase on normal teachers. We would urge your board to reject that motion. In the last bargaining session, the NEA proposed and then filed for mediation between the board and the NEA. The response from Superintendent Drummond rejected that mediation. And the memo to the board addressed to the board a single reason for rejecting mediation was given, and that was fiscal restrictions. But please, let's take a little closer look at this. The memo claims that this would be an aggregate 3.02% settlement, or around $473,000 of new money. That is true based on a snapshot of the teaching staff taken in January of 2022 and projecting that everyone is continuing with the district. We recognize that such a process is necessary for initial planning and the cost of pay reasons. But previous board actions since that time could reduce teaching positions. There have been resignations and retirements, some of which were slated to receive significant merit increases that will not be replaced. While we are now aware of all positions that are not being replaced, you do know that, a library media specialist has retired, and there will be no new hire to replace that person. Approx savings: $77,255. A science teacher retired and will not be replaced. Savings: $67,760. A sixth-grade teacher retired and will not be replaced. Savings: $76,262. A role language teacher resigned and will not be replaced. $58,260 in savings. All of these are still included in the district's presentation of the 3.02% increase. These are just a few of the positions that we are aware of, but in total, they represent $279,539 of salaries included in the district's 3.02% calculation that won't really be paid out next year. These alone brought the district's cost increase from 3.02% to 1.20%. And the savings are probably even greater. Perhaps that we're remembered. Should question or discuss with Ms. Bradley what the actual increase, if any, in salary costs for the '22, '23 under the proposal rather than the Snapchat projection that is now outdated. Let's get all the facts straight before imposing an offer for the second time in three years. We ask to have a mediator look at the numbers as a neutral third party and decide where it is accurate and where it is not. Let's not rush a decision that will leave lingering questions. Please come back to the table with the mediator and let's see if we can mark this out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is the extent of our folks that have signed up for public comment. So we will move beyond that. Typically, we would allow 15 minutes. I will allow one additional speaker. Please come to the podium and state your name, please.
I'm proud. My name is Andy Gross. I teach for an sister. Been here for a long time. I think we're talking about some terms stating administration. And when I do that, I want to be perfectly clear that it reflects on my building principal. She's the most wonderful person in the world, and she's a leader. And Jennifer, thank you. She's a listener, and she wants to help. So beyond that, like I said, my name is Andy Gross. I've been teaching in Milton for 20 years. I've gone through quite a few different superintendents, buildings, classrooms, a lot of different colleagues, and I have a problem. I think a lot of people have a problem. And the problem that I have doesn't just have to do with the percentage wage. It's a whole system that seems not to be working for certain people. I had a little technology snap where I grabbed a wrong iPad from my wife at baseball training. So my speeches at Fort Atkinson School, but from the top of my head, we'll make it work, right? I got this the day or week ago. Since 20 years of teaching. And I want to refer back to this later on, what that means to people, what it means to me. You might be surprised what it means to me. From the outset here, I want to say that it's been a pleasure working here in Milton School District. I really appreciate it. I've made a lot of great friends, a lot of people. There's a lot of faces I see in this crowd that make me feel welcome. They really do, and it's a community. And this is what we should be here about, is this community. And, you know, I can go down to Jake's and say, hey, give me one. They know what's going on. You know why? Because they're part of the community. I walk into a paper booth, and they're in the interior sitting there. And say, hey, Mr. Gross, how's it going? We're part of the community. We know each other. We're connected. And what it feels like with this new matrix that was proposed in past, I don't know if everyone really understands the dynamic of what that's that. What that matrix says is we can hire someone new and pay them more money, and veteran teachers, guess what? Live with it. You signed up a couple of years ago at this degree, and you know what? We don't have to pay you more or pay you the same value. And I use that word a lot, "value", because the district has put value on units of experience in education. And it's so true. Just look at the matrices that we saw that one time. You come down a number of slots, and if you have 15 years' experience, you come down 15 years, and you go over. If you have a master's, boom, that's your number, and that's where you're at. That's for people on matrix, not for people off matrix, like most of us veteran teachers. We don't get that courtesy, that courtesy. And it seems so wrong to put people in that position, to put people in a position where they feel animosity. And that's something that was brought up when I was talking to an individual. This individual got one of these new hijacks out of his matrix. And one of the administration team said to her, this isn't private knowledge, this is public knowledge. But you may not want to say to other- I'm paraphrasing. You may not want to say things to other people because it might create animosity. How could an administrator say that to an employee? How can we trust our administration if we don't trust the people we work for?
You're nearing three. Could you wind it up in 30 seconds or so?
Yeah, okay. So these are the things that I'm talking about. You know, I thought 20 years would get me more than three minutes. Those are the things I'm talking about: courtesy. Putting your hand out the olive branch. Right now, you can hire me at the bargain of being a 11-year teacher, or you can get someone new, and you can pay them what their value is. My wife is teaching in this district. She has a master's degree and almost 16 years' experience, and she makes less than a brand-new kid coming out of the master's degree. And there's nothing wrong with that. I would let every single board member look me in the eye and think and say, is that okay? Would you trust your employer if that happened? So I'm going to pass this medal, and Mr. Martin says you're the president of the board. I'd like you to hold onto this. It says 20 years, but to me, I feel like it's 11 because that's what you value me at. And it's not fair, and I don't like it, and other peoples don't like it. When you want to give this back to me someday and you show me the respect that it's 20 years, I'll take it back. Until then, you can have it back.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for that. And we will move fast to public comment. Number two is superintendent update for Mr. Rich's Red Hawk highlights.
Thank you. A couple of things that I want to highlight in the Red Hawk highlights. As many of you know, we've had great success with our Milton High School sports teams this spring. The girls' softball team, I'll start with. And after a very strong season, they qualified for the state tournament, which took place last week. Although they were knocked out in the quarterfinals, it was an amazing season with many standouts for our girls' softball team. We had two individuals make it to the state tournament for our high school track and field. Clayton Jensen in the high jump and Mara Talbok in the 3200-meter run. Both qualified for the state tournament. Sophomore volleyball, Dread Wheeling, competed in the boys' golf state tournament last week. And coming up tomorrow, our varsity baseball team is in Appleton. And they're over there already tonight. They are ready for their early morning for the final game against Arrowhead tomorrow. At the next board meeting, June 27, activities director Jeff Skubak will come and kind of give an overview of our athletics and activities highlights from throughout the year. We also have been very pleased to be able to hold our end-of-the-year graduations and other celebrations. The senior grad walk, where the seniors in their caps and gowns get out into their prior schools and walk the hallways to be congratulated by both the students and staff, is always a highlight. The graduation ceremony at the high school fieldhouse last week was extremely well-attended. The staff and the students involved in both the planning. And the presentations and the musical performance just did an outstanding job. And at Northside, our teachers were able to do their final goodbye as students have the posses pulled out. So some exciting end of the year things that have been happening in our school. And then the last thing that I want to highlight is the Angel Fund. It's something that our nutrition team has had in place for a number of years. And for those who aren't familiar, the Angel Fund provides short-term assistance to families in need and covers the cost of meals for students when they're in school. During COVID, the federal government provided free lunch, or free meals for all students. And coming into this coming year, that won't be the case. So students and families who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunches will have those available. But we'll be moving back to charging for meals for other families. But we do want to utilize that Angel Fund. We thank both people who in the past have made donations to that, the participants in the Bucky Adair Memorial Ball Voting have generous contributions to that nutrition team Angel Fund. And many families of graduates and seniors have donated funds that they still had and they're accounting back to the Angel Fund. So it demonstrates the thoughtfulness of folks in our community. Those are the things that I wanted to highlight at this time.
Great, thanks, Rich. I think one slight clarification, because I follow closely. I believe the high school boys' baseball games are mid-afternoon.
Well, that's right.
It is like a day after.
2:30.
Ish, yeah, it's time-dependent. But, yeah, so anyway, any other questions for Rich? All right, thank you, Rich. And 3A is a presentation on MREC from Mr. Lance Stoudamire. Welcome, Lance.
Hey, how are you? Going to do a quick review of what we've done for the past, currently, Andrew. Currently, we're doing our baseball softball programs. We started that in April for grades three through eight. That's for baseball softball. And then it's, we'll run games through middle of July. I don't get much more rain. We've had a couple rounds already. Don't look over. The goal is to have games have started around through July, and all July with that. For baseball, we do the Milton-Fort Atkinson baseball leagues. We play four for that. And then with the softball, we're in the County League. And we play the old Southern League, so it'd be Whitewater, Dullin, Relent, Orange, East Troy, all those teams. So those are good leagues for us with softball numbers. It's hard for us for both. We could sustain only leagues, but it's just easier having other communities when we only have one or two, three teams. And they have that, we can have six, seven, eight, eight number teams. It makes it more of a competitive league, and they can figure everybody for us. 4K through second grade, we do a lot of different things. We do T-ball, Coach's Fish, and Fish Machine. Those numbers, the teams, probably the one highest I've ever had. T-ball, we have 15 teams this year, which is crazy. Shoffrey, all, everything, all. It's lobby project by Schuber, on nights, it's crazy fact, but it's good to have that like that. Coach's Fish, 13 teams. The Fish Machine League is five. Our numbers are very strong for all, for all levels. Totalized for everything we have is like 498 kids. So we're doing good with that. Some lessons we started tonight, first round of our lessons, we do four every through the summer. We go four sessions, eight times a meets, and it's for two weeks. So it's Monday through Thursday, take weekend off Monday through Thursday for them. And that's considered a session, and then we keep running that through from now until the end, or the beginning of the first year of August for that. So numbers of those are, they range from anywhere from like this session, problems, we have 122 kids through at the end of the session. In July, 25th, August 4th, is 94 kids. Those sessions, sessions two, three, and four are still open, so we will be able to get to that as well. So we'll be well over 500. Right now, we're at a total number of 432 kids. So we'll be well over that by the time we get there. People will schedule that and take classes or if they want to see their class level or if they didn't know a lot of things. Yeah, so. Our Marlins Swim started as well today. We'll run that for the summer. We acknowledge that it'll end up June, July. And then we will have, we have three different time slots for practice. We go 11:00, 11:00, 2:00, 2:00 p.m. And we have hour time slots for practices there. So we have 32 kids for that side up. So we kind of allow them to kind of come and make their choose because we know a lot of people have gotten appointments, summer school, other things going on with that. So we kind of say, just let us know which practice time slot works for you, and we will be here to introduce the ground, so I'm going to practice there, so. And then we do, we do meets for that, too. We're going to do three or five meets this year with surrounding communities, that also have Red Hawks into that. So that's kind of our summer stuff with that. In the past, in the fall, we did play football. We had 110 kids for that. We did grades first, first and second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. They sure, we're going to change it up a little bit. We're going to make firsts at first grade and probably the Kinnear, the Intergus, the Fight Football type thing. And then do second, third together, and fourth and third together. And sixth grade, we were the biggest community with the sixth-grade team. We had three other communities that we participated in, which was also the County, only had one other one. So it was first, four teams total, so okay, at three. And then all my, I had one team. So we have to figure out which I do this for right now. For sure, it'd be second, third grade together, fourth, fifth together, first and third grade will be together. We'll travel, so Fight Football type stuff. The winter, we did a basketball camp, which was very successful. We did it with our high school basketball teams, coaches, staff, and players. The kids that participated loved it. It was great for them. They actually be regularized. So people are on the boards and first camps. They loved it and another. Can't thank the coaches enough because it was the middle of their season. They took the time after practice this year, an hour later with our kids, teaching girls and stuff, so it was good. We did two showcase plays, too, as well. We gave these kids a chance to be on the varsity court at halftime and to show off their skills. So it was fun, the activity that we came up with, and we're going to do again this year. The new big one that we really started on was MR Dance. It took off like crazy, like wildfire, which is awesome for us. And we have 112- It took off like crazy, like wildfire, which is awesome for us. And we have 110 kids that signed up. It was kind of a spur of the moment. My instructors, Chelsea Myers and Sandy Grinisky. Their dance studio closed down, so it was kind of the last minute I wrote something to do. They didn't even ask me to go on and it, it took off very well. So we got a recital this weekend. So if you're not doing anything, pitch tickets. You guys don't watch this stuff for us, so. Yeah, it was very good. We do ballet, tap, genus, hip hop, lyrical. So it's like a dance singing combo. So and that started in October and on the other side, so this weekend. Then our year round supplement we do is our lap swim with the pool, pool parties. Lap swim we do for five days a week, one day, one day Friday through the 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we do 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. And then we also do two A game ones, Mondays and Wednesdays games from 5:30 to 7:00. You can tell with our numbers that we have every day coming, everybody else are full with this. Compared to the old pool, it would be a great day. We had seven, eight. And now it is not uncommon to have 6, 15, 20 people there every morning, 5:00 a.m., 5:30. So and there's people that's coming all over Whitewater, Johnson, Daniel, or I can say it's, they come to we open doors and we should prepare for them. So it's been a great, a great addition to the community. I can't say more than I mean, so many compliments, so many compliments to that pool with it. And then even when we had redo some stuff here a little bit, they were even more impressive. I was like, oh, they can. So it's, it was a great addition for our community and everybody uses it a lot, a lot. So we also do swim pool parties and this winter was the most pool party we've ever done. It was hooked up solid Monday, our Saturdays and Sundays. And we, we don't do many, we, Friday night parties, but we started to, because there's so much to the handful. So it works out very well for that. So community room was a great hit. We did three great swim with the grades. Last week, the school we played and it was the best we've ever done. It was the space, community room, how we set it up. It was just perfect. We could bring them in, didn't have to go through the school like we did before and ensure locker room to put everyone, high school kids and coordinate all that. It was perfect. It was the best we've ever had. I, we always try to see how, how can we do it differently? Each, each teacher was like, I don't know how we can do it. It was, it was great. So, so pools being used a ton. We're looking at open zones as well for the public, for, for our kids. Right now, we're on Mondays and Wednesdays in the afternoons from 2:00 to 3:30. In the past, we've done more, but with, with COVID, we changed how we did our Marlins Swim last year. And so it's been a lot more people really like that. So we kept that. So we're, we're right now, we're on Mondays and Wednesdays. We're looking at more and we'll see what life goes and depending on how we all fix it, we'll sell it. So new programs, we're looking at newer status and pickable with the new courts. We're going to get that rolling for, rolling stuff here. Dumba, Water Dumba, parent child swimming classes, stuff to do with pool more, more open swim, lap swim, stuff like that. Just stuff works to fit with what we have for staff. And then gymnastics classes, that's, and that's, and that's based now, it's going to work out a lot better with gym one than it would be in the, you know, yoga. So we're looking at gymnastics, like classes for our community as well. That's kind of what's left for the year. It's crazy tactic right now. We have a lot of kids going on with baseball, softball, and all that good stuff. It's been good, but crazy. So any questions?
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Sounds like you got a lot of great stuff going on. What, if anything, do you need to make it better?
More time in the day. No, maybe just before it was space and now it's obviously, it's, it's much better, much better than what we had before. People don't realize the amount of things are in that building every single day, every single night. It is crazy, crazy. But that's, I would say for, for to make it even better, just all hands on deck for like staffing wise, like it's just me. So some days it's just here, here, here. And I feel like that I should get a dump, you know, type thing, just because you're jumping back and forth. But it's, it's worth, it's carbon copies. We're just trying to keep it there and make it better. Administrationally, for, for me with, with Jeff as my boss, maybe what, what do you need? What do you got? I need something, a question, something like that. It's just time and space, more time a day to get more activities, you know. The pool especially, there's so many people in that pool from 5:00 a.m. to the end of the day, right? Nine, nine, you know, with, with what we do in the morning and we have gym classes in the green day. And we have high school swim, Marlins Swim, another open, open staff or open swim for people for lap swimming. It's just crazy, you know, people get frustrated with it. They don't feel it's a lot, but they don't realize what's actually in there, you know, type of thing. So.
Great. Any other questions for Lance? Lewis, thanks for the update.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, keep up the good work. Okay, we will move on. Four on the agenda is the HR committee report from Mr. Rick Kamal.
Thank you, Joe. HR committee met last weekend, due in eight. The only agenda item is the discussion of possible action of the final offer to EPA for 2022, 23 collective bargaining agreement. As outlined in the attached memo in board docs, it states that the new teacher salary matrix was approved by the board back in January. This new matrix was done with input from both the administration and members of the teaching staff. The committee feels that this new matrix of the final offer to EPA will help us continue to attract and maintain effective staff while at the same time being responsible to this mix taxpayers. And looking at the other public schools in the Badger Conference, which we have used as our comparable group, the average salary of male teachers is the fourth highest. The committee will continue to look at this group in the future and make market adjustments if necessary. With the expected lack of increase in revenue in the coming year, the committee feels that the 2% increase on the base wage is all that the budget can handle at this time. When this 2% increase is combined with the $750 debt increase that each teacher receives, that results in minimum raise $1,652 per all full-time teachers. This results in an overall group increase of 3.0%. Having said that, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to implement the school district of Milton's final offer to the MEA for 2022, 23 collective bargaining agreement pursuant to its tax estate to 21.70, which results in a base wage increase of 2.0% effective July 1, 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Rick that he just enumerated and a second from Jennifer. So it would be appropriate at this point for discussion on that motion and we can reiterate that we had for voting. So.
I'll go first.
Sure, go ahead, Shell.
I'm still in opposition of the position of increase. Scott Walker put us in this binding to the Act 10. He put public employees and other employers, it's not just employees, it's employers also in this position by not giving us the tools and not the funding that's needed each year with the increase. But our public employees, especially our staff, have taken the brunt of the hit from day one of that act between healthcare, compensation, retirement, everything there. And as I said at the last board meeting, we're getting a double hit with insurance increases and this salary proposals. So I am closing this.
Great. In, in looking at this, there's, there's no easy decisions here. And one of the things that, as I contemplated this is although a budget is a budget, nobody knows how to be in and who's often be depending. But at the end of the day, we have almost anything, probably with the $250, for sure, we have probably $800,000 deficit this coming year. 1.5 million next year projected and 2.6 million the year following. The state really painted us in the majority of school districts in the state in this quarter with no increase to the revenue limit, zero dollars. A modest decrease in our enrollment is a devastating problem because the state attached each student to help us provide education and staffing and benefits and everything else that goes along with it is exasperating that. Not only are we making decisions this year, but it impacts next year as well. The state will not pass any budget between now and the time we have this discussion next year. So with no new money we have right now, we'll also need no new money next year. And this is something the state knows they can, the assembly, the senate made a decision with this in mind. I can't speak to the reasoning other than it is what they have done. And as I contemplate this, I don't like this. Everybody knows what inflation is, right? And it's impacting everyone on that side, everyone on this side, everyone outside this building. Likewise, the idea that we get into next year and have a deficit double of this year and have essentially 8% of our budget tied to staffing, I really, that really scares me to think not only are we making a hard decision today, but an even worse decision probably presenting us next year. I wish I had a better answer and, and I don't. The state, like you said, has a binding budget this time next year. They will not pass any budget. They never passed a budget by this time. And with that in mind, we're looking at the same money in hopes that maybe enrollment is increased to offset some of that. But it scares the shit out of me to think that we have no money next year, hard French, but it's true, that we have no money at this discussion next year. I don't like the decision we faced this today, but I even less like the decision to paint this in the form of next year. I don't have an answer for that. And I don't think the folks up here have an answer for either. And I wish we had, I really do. I, I appreciate that gas is expensive and food is expensive and it's expensive for everyone. I, I, I don't have any good answers other than what I do know is we have a tough problem now. Maybe the tougher problem next year that's facing us. I wish I had some magic wand, fix it off, where do I go? And Shelley, your points are very valid. And I know there's other folks who have yet to speak that have very valid points as well. And the thing that makes me lose sleep most on this is what are we going to be doing for this year next year? With taking the deficit that we're looking at now, eliminating most and not all of the one-time money and doubling that. I, I wish I had an answer for a while, where do I go? But it's, it's part of the equation tonight, as unpleasant as it is. And that's enough of that.
I just feel this is the first time we're tied into the CPI and the CPI has been so horrifically low history-wise since 2011. This is the first time that it's at least been a number where we can see that there might be an increase somewhere. And we told them last year it was because of money this year, but now we're already telling them next year, don't expect anything from us. And it's like, how do you want to keep teachers in all districts, not just this district, going in these positions? You know, we're getting a lack of people applying for jobs, a lack of people going into the profession. And we want to keep our most valued assets that are here for our students. And we're already giving them the due and going with next year. So it's hard to want to be motivated to stand up for that for their.
Do you propose then to just go back to the taxpayers?
I propose that we do something that's going to keep a value of our, our staff. Yeah. So whether it's the taxpayers, using our fund 10, whatever it is we need to do to show that we value our staff. Not just teachers, women.
Rich, I have a question for you, maybe a loaded question, but a year from now, inflation's, we're hoping to be 4.7. We're probably looking at a 6, 7, 8% number. How do you think this conversation goes next year?
I appreciate your question and I think the comments from the board members so far are spot on. They've been put in a really difficult place and by we meaning not just our school district, but public school in the state of Wisconsin has been put in a really bad place by decisions that were made 12 years ago, by decisions that were made this past legislative session, with options to do other things. And so I feel strongly that one of the most important things we can do is work together with our staff, with our parents to settle the importance of public schools across the state with the people that make those decisions. So what will things look like a year from now? I, I heard from, from Dave and Shelley kind of mirroring what we've been sharing about what our trends are. We're anticipating flat revenues for the next three years. And the legislature can do something to change that, not for next year, because that decision's been made, but for years down the road. But the only other way that revenues can change to meet our increasing expenditures are through a local operating referendum. As board members know, and I would imagine most of our audience know, Ron, year one of a five-year, two and a half million dollar referendum that expires four years down the road, but that, that money is built into our flat revenues. That's already been used to, to pay staff, to upkeep our buildings, to meet utility costs. So we, we have an option at any point down the road to have a discussion to bring something back to the taxpayers. But we also have to be alert to taxpayers of feeling the same inflationary pressures that our staff are and that our, that our district is. So there isn't, there isn't anyone that's in a good position and there's not an easy answer to it. We heard earlier in public comments, some very valid points about decisions that other districts are doing. And in some of those cases, we are considerably above those other districts in salary right now. And, and we've talked over the last few years about having a goal of being able to have 2% to 3% increases annually over time and not riding the low waves and the high waves of, of CPI. And we've been able to do that over the last few years. But at some point, if inflationary costs continue to rise, we're going to have to have a decision about how to best meet those inflationary costs for our staff. And really, without legislative changes, there's two ways to do that. To, to continue to increase our expenditures with flat revenues, we either have to make significant reductions somewhere else. And Dave spoke to that a little while ago, but a significant portion of our budget are staff costs. So to make significant reductions to afford higher salary increases than we have the money right now for, in the most part, is going to mean fewer programs and fewer staff. Some districts have made a decision to do that. You know, Stoughton has, has made a decision to reduce 10 teaching positions. Jamesville has made a decision to increase their elementary class sizes in their school district. Those are decisions that we would, that we will need to make down the road because no matter what we do with staffing, if our revenues don't increase, we're going to have a, a gap between our revenues and our expenditures just to meet that 2% to 3% increase that, that we're shooting for every year. So there aren't any easy answers to it. And there aren't any answers right now that, that everyone is happy with. What we know is that revenues are flat and what we know is that we're anticipating at least a 2.5% increase in our expenditures for next year, even with all the different ways that we're looking to be as efficient as we can. And we know that we have some one-time funds that we can use to reduce that gap both for this coming year and the next year. But anything that we do that increases that rate of increase, two or three years down the road increases the amount that we're either going to have to cut from our budget or bring to our taxpayers. And, and I appreciate that we had this discussion with the board before, the hesitancy on the board's part to spend money that we don't yet have in the hopes that the legislature is going to do something or in the hopes that a referendum will pass. I would caution us, caution us on, on doing that to a greater extent than we already are planning to over the next couple of years. Because of that one-time asset fund is running out. Like this, John, you said it was kind of a loaded question, but it's, and it was somewhat lengthy response. I apologize, but I think there's a lot of moving pieces to it too.
I'm going to throw one more loaded question. Maybe you don't know the answer to this. Maybe Carrie needs to come up. But one of the, one of the speakers talked about some teachers that have left the district. Do we have an estimate on what that line of savings would be versus what we're going to rehire to those teachers?
We know what folks who have left the district, either through retirements or resignations, we know what they were making both with salary and benefits for this current year. So we know that side of it. Our teaching staff has a couple more days to turn in their form on whether they're intending to return or not. So. to return or not, so we don't know for sure how many will potentially be leaving. We know the side of the coin on the folks who we have hired, what we have for the ones that are in today's staffing report, we still need to hire them. And there's always a wide range of salary and compensation for incoming folks. If it is someone who's fresh out of college, without an advanced degree, and they're not going on to family insurance, that's a much less large of an expense than someone who has more years of experience, has maybe an advanced degree, and is looking to be on the district's family medical, because that's a, there's a big jump there. So we don't have a dollar amount. There isn't any way right now to know what that is or will be. Some of the people that we've hired have come in relatively expensive, and some have come in relatively less expensive. We have hiring left to do.
I'm not worried about the people who have retired. I'm worried about the people who are leaving our district, and it seems like our staffing report at every school board meeting, there are more and more people, teachers and other staff members, who are leaving. And that concerns me. I think it should concern all of us up here. There is a teacher shortage, if you just watch the news. Wachishaw was just talking about the possibility, I believe it was, of having a four-day work week to incentivize teachers to stay and not leave the profession and stay as long as possible. I have a question. I don't think it's loaded. Just a question of clarification. From my own understanding, is how was the decision made to not bring in a mediator?
And I think part of that, I can answer part of it. Members of the HR committee can speak to that, because ultimately, it was the HR committee that shared that information with the MEA. Mediation is designed to find some given tape between two sides, whether it's specifically between a school district and teachers, education association, or between other two parties. The mediation worked really well when there was a contract, so this is kind of going back pre-Act X, when there were things that could be negotiated back and forth. With us right now only being allowed by law to negotiate a percentage increase on the base wage, there's not as many things for a mediator to get involved yet. So a large part of the discussion with the HR committee was around, does the committee feel, based on input that was given by the board at executive session, does the committee feel that there is room in the budget to go beyond that amount that the board gave the HR committee approval to go up to? And if there isn't, and we would say, we'll go to mediation as a sign of good faith, but we don't have the willingness to spend even more beyond our revenues than we already have made a commitment to, then we very likely be opening ourselves up to going into mediation without good faith. We touched base with our legal counsel, and she felt very strongly that unless there was a larger pot of money available, that the district could and was open to putting on the table to mediation. She strongly recommended that the district not go to mediation for that reason, because if you go, you should go with an intent that you're open to and have the ability to make some, do some back and forth negotiation.
I can share a couple of thoughts. I know everyone's anxious to hear from all of us. This is a very, very challenging decision for me. There's two pieces to it, right? Kind of split myself in half. There's an emotional side of it, right? The empathetic part of us. I would disagree with nothing that people have offered as far as what justification is for this kind of an increase, or a bigger increase than we're offering. The emotional piece of it is easy. The teachers have certainly deserved it, certainly have gone above and beyond, and have met the expectations, and are a high-performance staff. All of those things are true. The other side of me is the pragmatic, you know, fiscal responsible side, you know? I take my responsibility seriously. The community put at least some modicum of faith in me to do this job as one of seven people to evaluate all the pieces of the discussion. You are passionately representing a piece of it, right? Pay us what we're worth. The other pieces are, how do we pay you relative to your peers? How do we find enough resources to do that and to deal with the health insurance, the benefits piece of it? And I understand that's not a negotiable piece, but at the end of the day, it's money, right? We've got a budget, and we've got to be able to cover all the things that we deal with. And I am not willing to commit funds that would put a board in future years in a bigger conundrum than I think is coming. You know, we talked about the numbers, this coming fiscal deficit, $700,000 or $800,000, and some bigger figures beyond that. I think, to be responsible, I don't think I'm willing to entertain bigger deficits and hope that there's a way to fill that. This is the least distasteful way to proceed. And I know that doesn't sound very satisfying, but it, to me, is the way that we can do this with the least harm to a future budget, a future consideration, or whatever. It is a very challenging place to be. So I would close there. I don't know if anyone else has any comments?
I can just, so I'll speak briefly also. As a member of the HR committee, certainly I dove into all the things that we were given, and we looked at real data, and we are very much trying to balance this. And this is truly what this is. It's a balancing act, and we're trying to do everything somewhat in moderation, both for the taxpayers of our community, but also, again, for not just the teaching staff, but our support staff as well. But you need good support staff to do your job, and we understand that. They need to be compensated as well. And so there's real dollars here. This is real money that the community is spending. And when you look at the comparables, the numbers speak positively of your salary and your benefit package. It's very good compared to several other districts in our area. And maybe that isn't good enough for you, but I can tell you that we have truly taken a real hard look at this. And we have recognized that there are other districts that are not nearly as generous as the Milton district. So, and I know that doesn't make you feel perhaps any better, but we are trying, again, our very best to balance all of this.
There's just one more thing that I wanted to share before the board wraps things up, is the reinforcing both the board's dual goals of meeting the needs of our staff and providing a compensation package with both salary and benefits that is competitive in the marketplace, and as people alluded to, but also working within our current budget constraints. So as the board is waiting how to best do that, I want to reinforce a conversation that we've had, because it deals a little bit with what's down the road. Because the folks sitting here or people watching at home are thinking that inflationary costs are likely to increase. We're talking about counting on hoping that the legislature provides some more funds, but I do want to reinforce that we, as a district, have made a commitment to a teacher compensation model where we have steady 2% to 3% growth annually, and we look at market adjustments. Jen mentioned that some of our other groups have fallen considerably behind, so we are, over the last couple of years, have sent some more money into our admin assistants and instructional aides, our food service staff, and building and grounds, because we used to have a model where folks would have to wait five years for their group to have a market adjustment, and those groups, over those five years, fell considerably behind. We've made a commitment to get them caught up, and the model that we had in place has, as Jen mentioned, has allowed our teachers to make some gains compared to other districts, but we don't want to get in a position where we fall behind. If we find a year from now, or even in December, when we look at next year's data, if we see that we aren't near the top of the Badger Conference with our teaching staff, if we're falling at or below that median, that's when we look at market adjustments beyond that 2% to 3%. And it'll be a difficult conversation that we'll have to have, because we'll have to talk about where the funds will come from to do that. But it's important. We do not want to get into a situation where we don't have thoughtful discussions about how we best meet those needs. And the board has been talking about that, our admin team's been talking about that with the board, and with the MEA. And I think it's important for us to be alert to that moving forward. Conditions aren't great for public schools, but we have a responsibility to make sure that we're looking for steady, consistent, sustainable growth for all of our employee groups.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on the motion?
Just one thing real quick, Joe. As a parent of four kids in the district, and as a taxpayer, I would be behind the teachers 100%. And it pains me to say that I am in favor of the motion as a school board member, because of the dual goals that we have, maintaining a highly effective staff while working with the balance of budget constraints. That was in the memo. So I look at the Badger Conference comps, and I think we've done a fairly good job with pay raises and keeping teachers in line. And a year from now, having that hard conversation, seeing where we do fall, making sure that we do take care of our teachers, and they don't fall below the threshold we want them to. So as a new board member, I knew it would be hard, but I didn't think it'd be six weeks of the job, so this is a hard, hard, always will be, but that's where we fall.
Okay. Last chance before I call the question. And the folks who have had their opportunity. So I will reread the motion that we wrote on it. It was made by Rick, seconded by Jennifer, to implement the school district Milton's final offer to the MEA for a 2022-23 collective bargaining agreement pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 111.7, which results in a base wage increase of 2%, 2.0% effective July 1, 2022. We'll all vote it, and we'll arbitrarily start on the right. So I will start with Dave.
Yes.
And John.
Yes.
And Mike.
No.
And Rick.
Yes.
And Jennifer.
Yes.
I'm sorry, skipped myself. And Joe said yes. And Shelley?
No.
Is a no. By two, the motion passes. Okay. Are there any other things on HR level?
That's it.
Okay. Well, you still have the floor, because we will segue to the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Policy committee met, I think, on June 9. First item is the first reading of the NEOLA and other policy updates. As always, the list of the first readings is in board docs for all board members to look at, along with the proposed updates and the policy manual. There are a few new policies included in the list that I wanted to mention. First one is 143.2, new board member information requests. Yes. Okay. The policy includes language and the process, the handling of requests that will require a substantial time investment on behalf of the district administrator. Another new policy is 2210, 311 development. This updated policy includes language requiring construction, the hollocks, and other gemasites to be done to those students, fifth grade and above. 2261, 103, district and school report card. This new policy states the information such as achievement data, graduation rates, demographic data, and other information that the district needs to share with the public. This report card will be shared on the district website. 5113, open enrollment program inter-district. This change delegates to the district administrator the authority to approve or deny open enrollment applications, as long as it is consistent with the decision that the full board makes in January regarding open enrollment applications. 5500.01, conduct in virtual classroom. This new policy outlines how students are to be in virtual classrooms. The policy states that conduct or dress that does not allow schools also not going to allow virtual setting. 6152.01, waiver on school fees or fines. This policy discusses the waiving of fees for students whose parents are not able to afford. Did anyone have any questions or comments about any of those included in the first reading? Next, I will move on to B then, discussion of possible approval and adoption, second reading of the NEOLA policy updates. At the meeting, we also went through the, or approved the second reading of everything included in the list that is included in the board docs for the second reading, and those are listed there. Did anyone have any questions or comments at all? If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the policy updates as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave, to approve the policies as they've been updated and revised. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you.
That's a pause.
And thank you, Rick. Okay. New business. A is discussion of possible action on 2022-23 WIAA membership renewal.
Joe, I can give a brief overview on this?
Yeah.
The memo is coming from, Jeff Skibak has been working on this, he wasn't able to be with us tonight because he's with the baseball team in Appleton. But it really is our annual approval to join, renew our membership with the WIAA. It allows us to take part in the WIAA activities throughout here.
I will move to approve the 2022-23 WIAA senior high membership renewal. Ask the head. Thank you. Motion from Dave, seconded by Jennifer, to approve our renewal of the WIAA. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That says clearly. B, discussion of possible action on additional 1.0 FTE educational interpreter at Milton High School. Welcome, Ms. Susan Probst.
Hi there. We have a student who has attended WSD, St. Sisgo for the DASH in Delaware, all of his career. He's going to be a junior next year, and he has asked to come to Milton this year. Four years ago, we had a student who asked to come his senior year, and he made such an impact. I mean, I know we learned a lot when he was here, but I think we learned a lot from him as well. Students got super excited about his underage club, and they did a deaf awareness. It really was a great opportunity. His I D P is next week. He has visited the high school. The high school may feel very, very welcome, and he would like to come to Milton for two years. So, what we need is an educational interpreter to sit with him and sign all the things that he's learning in class. And this position would be funded with special education funds. Special education receives federal money that is set aside for students with disabilities for exactly this purpose. We save the money for when something big happens so that we can afford to pay the person the money and allow him to experience us and us to experience him.
Susan, does the staff person have the ability to provide resources to other folks in the school if it's needed? Or are they assigned exclusively to this person?
Assigned exclusively to that person.
Okay.
We contract with an agency if we need an interpreter, like a parent who's staff who comes to a parent teacher conference. We have a system set up for that to make sure that we have an interpreter there for most of them. And I'm not sure if that's what you're asking. Okay.
Any other questions for Susan?
I move to approve the addition of a 1.0 F T E educational interpreter at Milton High School starting in the 2022-23 school year.
I'll second it. So, on a motion from Rick, seconded by Shelley, she was a little quicker. We are, the motion is to approve the addition of a 1.0 F T E educational interpreter at Milton High School starting next year. Questions on the motion? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. That passes clearly. C, discuss an impossible action on 2022-23 meal prices. With the COVID interruption, this is kind of a normal thing for you to embrace with us, Mr. Gosdick, so welcome.
Thank you. So, yeah, it's, we've had news every year with inflation, which we've been hearing a lot, not only tonight, but on the news in the last several months. That is also impacting the nutrition team. The government was kind enough this last year and a half, two years, to let every student eat for free. And we are very excited that the school district families all took advantage of that and they were able to assist us in building back our fund balance which we had lost during COVID. So, so tonight, I'm here just asking for that 10% increase in lunch prices. I don't think it's going to be enough to, with inflation prices, I don't think it's going to be enough. I think we're going to end up using fund balance at the end of next year. But, you know, it's hard to say that for sure until we get to the end of next year. We do realize that it's going to impact district families. So, even with milk prices rising, we are going to keep that 10 cents. Right this year. And then, to assist our reduced families, we're going to charge them zero for next year is what I'm proposing. A lot of our reduced families, when they apply for free reduced, they end up just past that threshold of being able to qualify for free. And then they struggle to pay that 40 cents every day. So, we're trying to help them out this next year. We are proposing that we lower that to zero and see if we can give them stuff with the inflation because I'm sure it's probably going to dip down next year as well.
Mike, just real quick. Do you have any idea about how many families that could?
I don't have a number on, the total number of families in this league right now is about 23% that qualify for your reduced.
Okay. That's, that's good.
That's close enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
Just one quick thing on that topic. There are other fees in addition to lunch fees, and we'll be bringing those to the board through the next board meeting.
Sure. If, maybe this is a very question. If the 10 cents is not adequate to maintain the food service account, would we revisit this prior to decide next year? Or what would we do? I guess, I'm comfortable, I guess, with where our fund balance is at, that I think we can see how this year plays out. And then we'll look at it next year if we have to adjust more or revolve. I just, not only is nutrition team in, you know, the inflation, everyone is in the inflation bubble, right? So, we want to make sure that, I don't want to overprice us to the point where families don't see it as an advantage to come in and take.
I think, just to clarify, I think, just to clarify, when you said fund balance, that word is a little misleading. We have a fund 50 positive balance. Correct. And that would be the monies that might have to be tapped into if the 10 cent increase is not sufficient. Correct. Correct. Okay.
You don't want to tell there?
Yeah.
What if we have to?
Terry, was there something that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah. So, thank you, Terry. The nutrition team has a fund balance. The fund balance is there to support us buying equipment, like the nutrition team van, which is still back there, so I don't know if it's going to turn by bias. But thank you for giving Stephen permission to order it maybe after February. But it's also there to help replace equipment and things like that. But the government allows us only to have so much in our fund balance before we have to start spending, like a having to spend down plan. So, the participation this year, the fund balance is above what we can have that we have to come down, spend down plan, one might say. So, that's why I think I'm comfortable with the 10 cents at this point. The other thing we're looking at is the equipment at the high school is getting pretty old. And we've got a few pieces break down this year. And it took our companies that fixed the equipment several weeks to try to bring parts because a lot of our equipment, they just don't make parts for anymore. So, in addition to, you know, the 10 cents, you know, if, depending where the fund balance lands at the end of next year, we'll be looking at doing a spend down plan rather than upgrading equipment at the high school because that's our main production mission. So, okay.
Thank you.
Mike, is our plan to communicate with the families and students that will be going back to the system? Because I know a lot of families have depended on, you know, the lunches and breakfast every day and.
Yeah, yeah. So, we have been working with Terry Cleba to put it out on social media, get it out on a talk review. And then, you know, late in July, we'll start maybe emailing families. We'll be looking at sending the fax messages. And then during the registration process as well, you know, there'll be something in my letter stating that that we're going back to normal meal prices. And who knows? That could all change. The government will change their mind next week. This will all be forgotten, maybe. So, yeah. Yeah, we'll be, we'll be trying to communicate as much as possible to families and let them know.
You're still doing the summer program, though, for lunches?
The One Apple Lunch Lunch is running the summer program, just like they have in the past.
So, just to clarify, Mike, I tend to be crystal clear for everyone. And Terry, you can jump into, you can key to. The nutrition program runs semi-independently, correct? Semi. So, when you talk about fund balance, it's not the overall district fund balance you're talking about? It's a, it's a fund balance that you have for the nutrition program, correct?
Specific to our program.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We want to maintain our fund balance. We are on balance based for the nutrition team employees and their benefits and stuff like that. We don't want to have to come to the district. We can handle that.
Correct.
That's why, you know, balance, our fund balance, especially with budgets being as tight as they are.
Because at the end of the year, if you are in the deficit, then you do come to the district and the district puts in to get that correct. Correct. I think that's just important that everyone understands that.
There was a really important clarification that in that scenario, that would be the case. And, but extra funds in the, in the food service fund balance can't be used to address a deficit in any other area.
Right. I just don't want people to think when, when they hear that the fund balance, that they're, that people are saying, oh, yeah, you're taking money from the fund balance and giving it to, because that's not the case. It's not, it's the nutrition program's fund balance.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. That's my rule. That's why I just think fund balance.
Totally, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-23 meal prices. I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave to approve our next year's meal prices. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. And D is discuss an impossible action on Wisconsin School Day milk program. Mr. Gosdick, you have the floor again.
Thank you. So, yeah, with us going back to more normalized meals, free, paid, and reduced meals, we looked at whether we would be able to continue the breakfast in the classroom program that we did this current year. And looking back to pre-COVID, our breakfast numbers weren't the best. Participation wasn't the highest. And I think just because the meals were free this year, I think that's why everybody sort of jumped on board with the breakfast program. In anticipation of our breakfast numbers dropping, we're, I talked with the K principals, and we decided that we're going to come back out of the breakfast in, in the classroom. And we're going to go back to more traditional breakfast before school offering in the cafeterias. So, with that being said, we got a discussion then, do we want to bring Wisconsin School Day milk back? And in that discussion, we decided at the K, pre-K, pre-level, we decided to bring that Wisconsin School Day milk program back. The nutritional value of the milk for the little ones is needed. And then, the other thing with the little ones is they're, they're learning how to part a class, how to open their milk carton. And we laugh, but those kindergarten teachers, they have to open 20 of those every day for the first six weeks. It's a lot of work. So, we decided at the K3 level that it'd be a good option to, to bring that back. At least we see the benefit from the kids. Yeah, so that's why we're here tonight.
My point for me, because our industry does a horrible job of packaging our products. Mike, is there still chocolate and white milk in the place?
Yes.
I know it's minor, but as a, as a child, I remember I would drink chocolate. Spun a gallon in with white milk.
Oh, hey, yes, of course. So, I love chocolate milk. Yeah, yeah. We do, we offer the 1% white milk. And then, this next year, I'll be bringing in the 1% chocolate. Up until this past year, we were only able to do the skim chocolate, but they gave us some reprieve for the next two years. And my hope is that after those two years, they'll say, well, you guys can keep it. So, we're going to take advantage of that this next year and bring back the 1% chocolate for all of our students. So.
Is that a motion, Dave, or just a comment? Comment and support the chocolate milk.
That is a comment and support the chocolate milk. But I would move to approve joining the Wisconsin School Day milk program as presented.
I second.
Thank you. Motion from Dave, seconded by Shelley to join the Wisconsin School Day milk program as presented. Questions? In favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion clearly passes. Thank you for that. And the wellness committee update? Where are you all, Mr. Gosdick?
Get her done. Get her done. No, it's all good. So, it's kind of a quiet year for us. We met a couple of times, and we kind of got together. And we planned our first ever wellness safety fair in family fun walk, which was held over Mother's Day weekend. And the weather was perfect. We had great participation, I think, for it being the first time. We set up over there in Chilberg Park. And all the soccer folks had a drive through us in order to get a regular soccer game. So, they all had us go up and say what's going on. It worked out really well. Our participating organizations this year were for healthcare, Project Berea, the county public health department, local police department, Edgerton Hospital, Milton Public Library, Proximal Hope, E and D Water Works, and the Milton Area Youth Center. Either that moved, so they made donations for the fair. So, I would say it was pretty successful. And, you know, as a committee, we're going to be looking at maybe doing that yearly. So, coming up into this next year, our focus is going to be updating the wellness policy because I know that is one of the emails I got from Jim. So, thank you. So, we'll be looking at doing that. We're up for our triannual assessment, which is we're taking a test of the wellness policy and see where it compares to, you know, the gold standard. So, our last assessment is out on the district website. So, you can kind of see where we were at three years ago. It's certainly spent three years of the past. So, that's kind of our goals for this next coming year.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mike? Thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on. Staffing is miscellaneous. It's customary to do staffing report next, so that is included in board docs.
I make a motion to approve the updated staffing report with the addition of the resignation following.
I'll second that. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave to approve our updated staffing report with the addition of an additional resignation. Questions on that? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That clearly passes. Gifts and donations.
I would move to approve the gifts and donations. We're trying to, second that.
Motion from Dave, seconded by John to approve our gifts and donations, which by my count, or my board doc document here is $9,500. So, thank you again to our wonderfully generous community. Questions on those? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion clearly passes also. Meeting dates, Mr. Don.
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is two weeks from tonight here on June 27th at the regular board meeting time, 6:30 P M. We have a finance committee meeting scheduled for June 23rd at noon. And we have a strategic planning session, excuse me, for all board members on June 29th, and that's scheduled from 8:00 until 10:00 A M. Chris Tubingworth isn't here, so I don't know if he has talked to you, Rick, about another H R committee meeting?
Sorry. I've never heard of it.
See when he comes back and give it a word out if there is a.
Okay.
Rich, where is the strategic planning meeting?
He'll be here.
Right here. Yes.
Okay. That's it for dates that are coming up anyway. All right. We will contemplate an executive session, and we do not plan to return to open just FYI. So, a contemplated closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 118.125 and 19.8571 sub F to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary debt of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or debt or involved in such problems or investigations. Those, this is relevant to review and possible actions regarding a previous student expulsion order. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Mike to do so. Vote to move to executive, starting with Shelley.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe is yes. Rick, yes. Mike, yes. John, yes. Dave?
Yes.
We are in executive session. Thank you for my interview.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hello. Yes.